Please. My personal agents. I mean, so. Actually, very much. Or. And this.
Thank you. Jason, your turn to open us up.
Let's get the show in the room.
Okay, we'll talk for me, Vicki.
Where should I start?
Yeah.
Commissioner Van Alston.
Here.
Commissioner Reuben.
Present.
Commissioner Havick.
Here.
Commissioner Havick.
Okay, thank you, Vicki. Public comment, anyone who should make public comment.
I'm Stevenson, Elkhart, it's George President. Just recently, I knew it was manager, so we'll be ready to bring him and introduce to county commissioners. And hopefully we'll have a good working relationship here, so.
David, take.
Thanks, Tom. Dave Tate, I'm a little village manager in Elkhart, it's super happy to be up north. I come from the thumb area of Michigan, been in Michigan my whole life. With full service and manager most of that career, ran away sparkling for a short period of time. So bring kind of a wealth of units of old knowledge to the position and looking. When Elkhart is out with some of their struggles, stormwater, I'm sure those aware of some of the struggles that we had. So appreciate getting to meet him tonight and Jeremy as well. So looking forward to work with you all and really happy to be a part of Antrim County.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thanks, taking the time. Other public comment. Okay, great.
To the chairman of the Antrim County Council of the Union, we would like the commissioner, the county administrator and your legal counsel to consider twenty-four words for the upcoming ballot proposal on the trail. We feel it needs to be simple, needs to be easy to understand in a way that people can say, I did it. Because if people don't know the N O W, they have a tendency to vote no. Should Antrim County, by the way, go to eighteen million dollars, comma, and bring it back within fifteen years, just town up to give it to them. So now. You think the people could understand that? They see that you're already up to eighteen million, you're saving a ton of money because of the fifteen year amortization. And familiar with mortgages? We might be cutting a lot less interest if they'd been on fifteen million versus the thirty. This too. Like you guys have basically cut the proposal from the ballot last year to. You took your twenty-five million or your twenty-five years plus eight months, that was thirty-three million. Now this appears to be an eighteen million dollar review, even though there's still eight million going in from the account now. But we've talked to our people, I've also talked to the chairman of the Antrim County Republican Party. A good discussion about it and say, if you guys can make it simple without violating the end of the year, losing to your bond attorney. We feel this is something that Antrim County could understand and would run this through. So we respectfully request, I sent the three people who voted this voltage to your cell phones. Chairman Heflin, my commissioner Reuben and Ray Sola as well. So that is something we'd like to put on the record and ask that you consider doing for us, the people of Antrim County. Thank you.
Thank you. No else? Okay, we'll move on then. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Sure, move.
Is there a second?
Support.
Take your moves, supportive discussion, all those people say aye, someone opposed. Minutes, deal July third, twenty twenty-five, I will note. Just a very small correction in my fault because I didn't enunciate well enough for the clerk. The last paragraph of the first page. Second to last sentence, it says, which it currently says, which is right over the health and well being of the community. It should say, which is vital to the health and well being of the community. So my correction, I have.
I make a motion to approve as amended, support.
Thank you, supportive, anything else available, please say aye. Anyone to. A Q, any liaison or committee reports? Cheers.
North Country Community Mental Health met today and. They passed out. The fourth annual spaghetti dinner for the New Horizons Clubhouse. It's going to be on Friday, September twelfth. At the New Horizons Clubhouse, Rapid City, Michigan. And they're going to have spaghetti dinner there and silent auction.
Thank you. Anything else, anybody? Okay. No, I'm unfinished business, this business, they got a motion to prove claims and counts in amount of one hundred and twenty-two thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars and twenty-eight cents.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion, any questions out of those?
Yeah, I got, I have a question on number sixteen. Is that, it says fingerprinting sex offenders, that singular or is that plural, meaning? Did we pay this for one person?
I do not know the specific to them.
No, it wasn't.
It would be one person, what I don't know is whether that's multiple or if that's our, the amount that we pay them to allow us to access. This is.
Okay.
And then also I have a question on number forty-eight. Which is, what is it, Sheriff, it's C L Towers, that's a.
Central Tower.
Okay. And then the other one is, what under is Mancy, Mancalona?
Yeah, that's right on the towers.
Okay, okay, all right, thank you.
It'll be if Janet's out there in virtual world, she could bring us that invoice that Ray's wondering about, Jeremy.
Yep.
That'd be great. All right, we have a motion in a second, all those people, please say aye. They want to post. Thank you. Moving on, chairman appointments, I'm looking for a motion to accept the chairman's appointment of Isher. Bishop Pethwa to fill a partial term expiring on March, excuse me, December thirty, twenty twenty-nine on the Antrim County Materials Management Planning Committee.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Support.
We'll support it, questions? All those, please say aye.
Yeah.
Aye. Q. Also, looking for, looking for a motion to accept the chairman's appointment of Jim Goode to fill the partial term expiring on December thirty-one, twenty twenty-six on the Antrim County Airport Zoning Board of Appeals.
I'll make the motion, I'll support.
I would support it, I should, all those people, please say aye.
Yes.
And again, looking for a motion to accept the chairman's appointment of Jeremy Scott to a three year term expiring on December thirty-one, twenty twenty-seven on the Antrim County Airport Zoning Board of Appeals.
I'll make the motion, I'll support.
We'll support the questions. All of the people say aye.
Ayes.
They want to post. Thank you. And we'll, so Mr. Brabbitt's joining us, please.
So is that quick?
No, not at all. Stick to fifteen minutes in case you haven't heard that. Now, but I can sit fifteen minutes now, so a little time if there was questions for the board as well, I appreciate it, thank you for that.
Working on that.
Thank you for turning on the agenda today to put them, since the community mental health, that's why twenty-four, anywhere reports. Since it was in your back, and I'll take the approach I did before, which is finally hit the highlights and then answer any questions if that's an acceptable approach. And I want to start with the overall design, which was really intended to illustrate the fact that we've been working on being able to bend and not break. It's been relatively unpredictable from a finance standpoint, in particular with post-COVID and the public health emergency online. So we put quite a bit of effort into developing some scalable plans and ways to manage that uncertainty from a finance standpoint. Those unpredictabilities really are carrying into the current just for you as well. If we go to the page that's got the thirty-nine, twenty-nine and thousands, so it's a couple of slides ahead.
Hold on a second, Mr. Brad. Don't, don't, you don't.
All right, that remote actually does work, the down arrow is what you want.
It's like opposite to what you think.
There we go, so we served thirty-nine hundred and twenty-nine people on that flight twenty-four. That is similar to previous years, it's down a couple hundred. And is really more close to resemble street numbers as far as number of people served. Again, similar to previous years, twenty-four percent or seventy-four percent of those people were adults. Seventy-six percent were children, or twenty-six percent were children. I'm not sure about this, and then. Twenty-four percent were of the population that we served had intellectual development disability. And seventy-six percent had a mental illness, and that too looks like previous years. Uh we did over two thousand crisis screens, those primarily happened. In area uh hospitals and the emergency rooms, they also happens in our offices. They happen in county jails as well, just depending on uh where we're called to. Uh from an economic uh impact standpoint. We, between direct employed staff and staff who support via contract. We're a little over eight hundred uh people uh within the six counties that we support. The two hundred and three people that were directly employed by North Country is down from the previous year, that's intentional. Mostly, there are a few positions that we're still recruiting for that we haven't been able to open. And we continue to reduce that uh number through attrition primarily. And then I point out that sixty-five percent of the budget is spent externally uh on provider contracts. We put a couple of uh examples in here of some of the work that we've done. And behind the scenes, this web-based training app saved a lot of time on our end, has saved a lot of time for the contracted providers that we've worked with. Um another example of that was getting into the Michigan's assessment tool, being part of the. Um uh trial, if you will, for that, it gave us input of the how it was going to be implemented. And also got us prepared, so we were ready to go when it come in uh. This is a list of all of our services, um crisis services, um the people are fairly familiar with that. Those who have, that everybody is entitled to, to a service that are in front of those. And um so we, when we screen someone and they need hospitalization. If they have private insurance, private insurance pays, if it's Medicaid, Medicaid pays. But if there's no insurance, general funds pay and we were the ones that are picking up the tab. So it's one of the areas where I think uh there will be impact from the reductions in Medicaid. Because it's kind of designed to, to uh move people off the rules. So it's gonna be centralized, you'll have it when that happens. And then we'll have to really, if we're careful about how we ration those G up uh services. Where it's not mandated and we provide the services. Um other ones that I would point out. Um are uh the assertive community act or treatment. With two teams, one's based here in Villarreal, one's based out of patology. So uh that team serves some uh fairly uh. Um sick individuals, if you will, people need a lot of support, need to make sure they're taking their meds. Um and by real intense support, kind of a hospital without walls, if you will. It's designed to keep people from showing up in the emergency room from being part of the long-term. Um system and keep people out of the hospital, so that team can see people multiple times a day. But generally speaking, that has some more to do. Uh for folks that are part of that uh particular service. Something that I don't think I've mentioned before here is over in the overall services. It's a team of folks that we have that uh do assessments for people living in their home to understand whether they may need nursing home services. Or possibly in a nursing home and whether or not they need behavioral health services. And then lastly, the clubhouse chairs, uh. Commissioner Rubin, I mentioned it earlier, all right. Um and uh you know, there's this, you're gonna do it there, but that is a social cycle, social. Psycho-social, I'm gonna have trouble today. Um where people have a work order day, so the club members actually run the club and it's designed to look much like a work day during the day. Um and they do uh transitional employment. And uh provide a lot of other services that help people really uh navigate recovery, if you will, uh through these processes. We always put uh some stories in here that people are willing to share. And this one in particular, um I thought it would point out down here on this plane to, he's got a storefront that's over here on Catawba. Um and that is done through uh great family support, first of all, that you can't underestimate that. And uh community living supports and supported employment supports and from North Country. Um and he developed a product, you know, just recycled uh items. And now with that of his family's got a storefront, he's able to sell things and his friends are able to sell things out of that storefront. And uh is uh working on his own home, so that's a, that's a very nice success story that's here in the area. Uh because of the services. And I'm not going to go into all of these, but they're worth, they're worth reading, people are really willing to share a lot of personal. Uh information and and uh discuss their, their journey, if you will, um of recovery. Uh if we look at our financials, our operating revenues for FY twenty-four were just under sixty-four million dollars. Just uh fifty-nine million of that was Medicaid. Um and we looked Medicaid and Healthy Michigan together because they're kind of interchangeable. But when we look at um where cuts are likely to happen, it's probably in the Healthy Michigan. Outside that's expansion population that's talked about frequently. So I'm going to point out that five from two million dollars of that is helping Michigan. Uh in FY twenty-four, it's a little less of a percentage in the current fiscal year. And I expect this is going to continue to decrease as we look forward. Um there was two point three million in state general funds, uh which um. We used to come in pretty close to zero on that, and we do ration that pretty closely. Um and uh you know, the other county appropriations of other charges, interest, those kind of things make up the remainder. Um from an operating expense standpoint, uh just under forty-one million was spent in provider services. So those are those external contracted uh services. And the other large item there is salaries and fringes, which would be all of our internal. Uh services and expenses, and that would include administration as well in that level. And let's point out, because I went back into the law. The last, the two years prior, this year and the year prior. Uh provider services goes up, so it went up by a little over five percent and then a little over four percent uh. In uh those successive years, the internal salaries and fringes have gone down. So we were down about two percent and then five percent uh the following year. And that's really just because we had a level control over those internal expenses and it's easier to. I think, work those levers, if you will, from a, from a budget standpoint. On the last slide here, uh it is a breakdown of uh people served by county. So Antrim County uh was at twelve percent, um the high end is a Sycamore County at nineteen percent. I think I've talked about that before, some of that is just legacy. So a Sycamore County was uh one of the main places when people came out of institutions. They were in a Sycamore County, and so that continues even today. Um and then uh from a, from a population serving. The like that, others are down there. Um the MI adult and child um make up the small percentage of folks served. There are the large percentage of folks served. And I D D, adult, child make up the smaller percentage, but the expense is inverse to that. Because the I D D population, uh the nature of those services are long term, sometimes twenty-four seven, sometimes more than one staff. Uh to support folks in the community, so that becomes a relatively expensive and intensive service. And um sixty-four percent of our cost uh goes into that population of maintaining those folks in the community. And uh only thirty-six percent is the amount of child. And so I, and with that, I think I would just take any questions.
Questions?
Uh we mentioned that those are services you offer in the jails. I don't expect you to have the number today, but you know, could you give me the number of how many you serve in Antrim County?
I could do that.
I appreciate it. Whenever, yeah, okay, I appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, Brian, if you could just tell the rest of the board and and folks about. Last, last year you talked a little bit about redetermination and kind of threw that now, and if you could just. Explain a little bit what that is in just a, just a minute of where we're at because of that.
Sure, our um funding and and demand from services are not directly linked. Our funding comes from the number of people who are well and medicated with six counts. And then further, it's determined by um what uh insurance policy, if you will, they qualify for. Um so there are different values on that, and it's even further broken down by what sets and how old you are as far as that funding is over there. And during COVID, there was a moratorium of uh people um uh being redetermined, right? So nobody dropped out of the rules, so for really.
That microphone's pulled up, because I, I know sometimes we, maybe the audience out there uh might be watching us then carry. So, is that with us? Thank you, Jim, thank you.
So um so during those three years, the Medicaid rules just continued to grow. And then when they were doing the public health emergency online, they said, okay, let's go back and redetermine everybody. Which is a process of just validating um your disability status and your income and assets. And so on and so forth to make sure that you still qualify. And um we expected it to be bumpy and it was really bumpy. And it was bumpy in ways that we really didn't anticipate, uh you know, we knew after three years. A lot of the population we served moves around and, you know, if we hadn't served them and if the state hadn't served them. Would they have had the right address to even let them know that they needed to be determined, that was one, and that was expected. What was not expected was that when they were, were redetermined, a lot of mistakes were made. And so they were put into the wrong category, so you might have somebody with sixty-five or seventy. Living in an AFC home that is put on a uh plan first plan, which is really contraception. And has no uh uh. Associated revenue for the Medicaid system and really no benefit for the individual. Uh who's in the home, so there was a lot of that that had to be worked out. I would say now we're at a good baseline, it looks like what we would expect it to look. Um but when people were going into the wrong buckets and the wrong things were happening. It took a long time to really help the state identify what that was and fix all that. Uh but the systems issues, well, that was something. So it caused our revenue to really go low and we had to have some faith that we would get it corrected. But again, can't operate all on base, so we also had to, you know, make sure that we were in line for it.
That, um, this is specifically about GTI in Manzalona. Um myself, as well as Commissioner Heffern, got an opportunity to visit them early this year. And uh until, until uh myself going in there, I didn't realize what they did. And what a um, what a great thing it is for the community. We have, I'm gonna probably skip the number, I think approximately forty-eight clients there. And uh the reason I'm bringing this up is, or twofold, actually, it was on the news uh yesterday, I believe. I, I, nine and ten, maybe it was at nine and ten. Okay, anyways, um and also you had sent an email to Commissioner Rubin on June twenty-first of this year. And uh Commissioner Rubin forwarded it to Commissioner Heffern, which in turn he, he shared this all with all of us. And it says at the meeting, because you obviously were, you had a, a meeting with them also, with the management. And it said, at the meeting, we discussed the four daytime activity services funded by Medicaid, which is skill building. Out-of-home, non-vocational, community living support and supported employment. And I, I understand, you know, um some of the clients, which I thought was fantastic, they do kit building or parts or putting parts in, you know. And uh community mental health is saying that's not skill building. Um I guess what I'm a little confused on the skill building though is because these are people with mental disability. Um which means that they're never gonna, I mean, they're not gonna get married, they're not gonna have families of their own, they're not gonna drive cars. You know what I'm saying, but. What I seen, I mean, just the smiles on their face, the employees that are just doing a phenomenal job. I mean, you, it's a calling, it's not like a job, you have to love doing that, working with these, these individuals. And you know, I'm afraid if some, if, if, if they were to close their doors, I mean, you have. These, these individuals with mental disability, you have their families, it's, it's a real problem. I will say this, on Tuesday, I had an opportunity to ask State Representative John Roth the question. I brought this up because this, I'm pretty passionate about this. And he assured me that him and uh State Rep Ken Borden are working on this. And I, like I said, it was early in the year, I think that GTI was in the red by, I'm just gonna say thirty thousand.
Yes.
It's, I mean, it's not good, but considering state budgets and funding and that. I mean, we, we gotta make, we gotta make it work, we do, because that is closing the doors for them, it's not an option. And then State uh State Rep John, uh John Roth, Roth said to me. That if they shut down, it's all, all of them are gonna end up shutting down in Northern Michigan. You know what I'm saying, I just think that that has to be a priority, we have to figure out a way to make it work.
I can guarantee you, I've spent a lot of time on it, I've spent a lot of time personally with him. And it has never been my goal to shut down any one of these programs. But there are requirements on the services we're delivering. That we've got to figure out how to be closer to fire that's in order for Medicaid to get to the grid for. And you're right, skill building is the one that I think is really in question. And you take a facility like Manzalona and you say, oh, well, you need to have opportunity outside of the facility. Not much opportunity there, so I also get that. Um and so we continue to work with GTI and some continue to work with the department, there's a group call tomorrow. End of day, um to try to kind of work this out, the department is interested in preserving this as well. But these uh requirements really drive from the federal level. And so um I would agree a hundred percent. Um I have a family member who has benefited from services like that for many years. Um the reason that I'm here is really because I understand. Uh what the impact of community mental health services can do on quality of facilities, so it is not lost. So yeah, I happen to be the guy who's bringing the message and really trying to get at the curve a little bit. And getting it corrected so we don't get an auditor review and then have to fix it in ninety days and everything. So I, I am very submissive to not uh imposing any kind of regulation or restriction of rule. That is not required to do those services. So I think um the nature of skill building today. Um needs to be timely, it, it needs to be progressive. Uh it uh needs to have a pathway to other things, other volunteering or employment. Those are really tough things, I think, uh in a really rural community, but those are the. Requirements that are being put out there at this point. CMS at the federal level came in and reviewed the state. And uh in that review, um there were some items that I wasn't really aware of that. To the, the federal level that are saying you can't do that. So for instance, if uh a program were to bring other folks from the community in and do a, a cooking the last. And you've got all these folks together, um they're calling that reverse integration and they're saying that. Um so there are, you know, at the local level, there are things we can do, GTI does a great job advocating for that. Um I also know that uh Senator DeWist is also on this and taking a look at, met with him. Um very supportive of seeing if we can get some flexibility here. So we, we will see where it goes, the fact that the department called this meeting, I did not vote this way. Um is because it really get a lot of feedback from folks, so. They're important and the service, so I do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, you know, I have not experienced, but they do kits, these guys pull kits for us at the shop they work. And the precision parts that we make, these kits go with a lot of these parts. And if they weren't correct, that goes against our quality. And you know, that, it's a skill to build those kits because you have to label correctly, you have to put it right. I don't know how many different ones we have. You know, but I don't. You have to be able to do that with. I'm just saying, I mean, if they want to argue skill, they need to come see what these guys are doing and, and, and what they're adding value to. Is what they're doing. If you really want to look at that, they guys have value to our product also by doing a. A, a trade.
Your shop. It would totally change the dynamic. No, I mean, as far as. The regulations that I think do it, yeah.
But it's in a perfect spot. Honestly, I mean.
And, and Mr. and Mr. Matt, I'm not gonna shoot the messenger. I appreciate you being here tonight. I appreciate, uh. Um, what your staff does, uh, for folks, but I do echo, uh, what Ray said, um. You know, um. It's difficult for people to localize with a sixty-three million dollar budget and think that we're going to, um. That, that we're gonna impact. Um, a very small forty-some people. Um, in a building that by anybody's. Definition is run on a shoestring. And so that's our only point. And I, and I know, I, I, I'm certain you share our concerns.
So I will think one of the things that I think, um, is important. So, um. In, in looking at all this, and we started back in October, right? This started out just trying to figure out how to balance everybody's budgets to make them viable. And we are shutting down our own internally run programs. And, um, uh, referring folks out to the contractor programs, we have budget money. To change rates in these programs. So, um, we recently put rates out, uh, to GTI in particular. That with no changes in what they're doing, no increase, just based on their current vibes would. Uh, result in sixty-eight thousand dollars a year for it. So I do think, because there's a little bit of runway here to figure out the rest of this. That it's really important to make sure that they're financially able to sustain and evolve. So. We haven't, uh, we put those rates out and having the discussion back and forth, but based on that. Um, it would result in sixty-eight thousand.
Thank you. Anyone else? Uh, I got a motion to approve Mr. Abbott's annual verdict.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. All support. Okay, move his part. Questions. I was very pleased that I, uh, I would oppose. Thank you. Thank you, Vincent. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Mr. Thompson from Road Commission.
Good evening. I know you want to keep these down under three months, so I'll do my best. Uh, first, uh, as you know, the border road commissioner sitting back here, Chairman Peter Hugueney. Vice Chair Peter Amos, uh, uh, member, uh, Kevin Dyar. Road Commissioners there. I'll just go through this real quick. I guess I gotta hit the button there to move on, but, uh. In the report, we'll skip down to. This talks about our total revenues and twenty twenty-four. Excuse me. We received, uh. Twelve million, three hundred fifty-seven thousand in revenues total. This was about a hundred forty thousand dollars lower than the previous year. Uh, main source of revenue is the Michigan Transportation Fund. You can see on the pie there that. Right, right, there. Uh, at about seven point two million. This was up about a hundred fifty-two thousand over twenty twenty-three. MTF. MTF is the, uh, Michigan Transportation Fund, which is. Collection of, uh, fuel taxes, registration fees, a little bit of marijuana tax and a little bit of state income tax. And that is divided out through formula to MDA. County road agencies and cities and villages. But that is the main transportation funding source for all road agencies, state of Michigan. Township contributions were down a little bit by about two hundred forty-four thousand. Which was a total of about two point six five billion of township contributions. So they definitely do a lot. Lot of work with us, uh, primarily local roads. They do some work on primary county roads as well, but. They're getting a bulk of the work done because our main source of funding is not adequate. Page five, this is a graph of the MTF revenues, uh, over the last twenty years. And. When I, I said that the fuel taxes are a part of that, uh, fuel taxes have been indexed. For inflation in the last, I think it's four years now. Uh, in January twenty-one of twenty-four. January one of twenty twenty-four, the, uh, fuel tax was indexed for the third time. Uh, this has increased by the maximum amount of good, thirty cents a gallon. And then again, this past January, it was indexed up to thirty-one cents per gallon. So. Get a little bit of increase from that index on fuel taxes. However. I think I stated this last year. Vehicles are getting more fuel efficient. Also, uh. Or a few more electric vehicles or hybrids are jumping in there too. So we are seeing a little less consumption. So that index on fuel tax helps offset some of that. Page six is our expenses. Little over eleven million dollars. In total, we were down about eight hundred thousand from the prior year. This is just a matter of the different. Mix of projects that we had accomplished. Uh, compared to twenty years. And then you can see on the pie chart, our local road maintenance is by far the biggest. Expenditure and a lot of that, um. Because of our Act Fifty-One, we were required to make the state. Some of these definitions are kind of goofy. So maintenance rolls in, some capital preventive maintenance, which really should be separated. So a lot of that number is some. Township contributions we put towards chip seals to. Help prolong the life, a lot of the payments that we have out there at township, so. Uh, it's not just routine maintenance of that chunk. Listen, seven on screen, can't get there. Well, anyway, page seven talks about. Uh, road projects that were completed. Uh, township requested road projects, uh, were up by about four hundred eighty thousand more than twenty twenty-three. Total was about three million, three hundred eighty-four thousand. Township request of projects. I stated before that they contributed about two point five six million. So the rest of that was going to the road commission put towards those projects that's township related. We do have a cost year policy and since two thousand nineteen through this year, there's about three point five billion that we are allocating for township. Selected work of road projects. And then in the end of this, an appendix C, there's a list of the projects that we did completely refer to, if you want to see what we got done. Hey Jake, this graph here shows the, this is the federally eligible county road system. It is. Made up of. Roads in the primary county system, but it's not all of our primaries. About a hundred seventy-eight centerline miles of road that are eventually eligible. So this graph shows the condition, payment condition. Over the last twenty years. Uh, we have been in a nice trend. Over the last several years where we've been reducing the number of four, which is red on the graph. And increasing the number of good fair, you're gonna yell. Uh, I just went through a few weeks ago, the, the annual rating that we do on our payment condition. And for twenty twenty-five, uh, that trend is not continuing. We're seeing a little bit of a drop. Uh, increasing in the poor condition. Uh, we had several miles roads that just went from that fair to poorer condition this year, so. Hopefully we can turn that around a little bit in the next few years, keep pushing ahead and getting it. Increasingly good and fair condition roads. That leads into, oh, and skipping every other page here. I think my gentleman put the, uh, every other, the charts on there. So the last page in the report talks about county road needs. Uh, last year I reported about forty-nine million. This is estimated, of course. This year it is about fifty-one and a half million. So. Losing ground every year and have been for many years. I think I believe it's true work. It's all about funding. People need to increase our funding. Uh, right now, we are fully staffed. We just hired several new guys this year. That several retirees will have more coming years. Hopefully continue to replace them, but it is getting harder and harder to find. People, everybody knows that. Just feel like that. So we're, we're starting, we've been fortunate so far. We haven't really run into that problem. Starting to get a little tighter now. We're a little worried, but we've been able to keep up. And with that, I know probably I think, uh. Question is, sorry, recall from last month that. Uh, I have announced my retirement in October of next year, twenty twenty-six, over a year, so. Been working with the board to. Advertise and start a selection process to find placement. I tried to get three minutes.
I got a, uh, an email from my resident yesterday about, uh, brine. Anyways, um, do we only have one truck, uh, the county only has one truck that does brine? Is that? The case?
We have one primary truck, which is a large tanker, and then we have a smaller one that's used for. Dead ends and turnarounds and stuff like that. So really, it's one truck.
It's one truck, okay. Um, because I, I mean, due to the ice storm, I think you've, you know, and I've said it, you're about two. Three weeks behind because of the, the delay or whatever. So. Okay, cause I know in like lakes of dispersed, a resident lakes of the north. Which, you know, I don't live on a gravel road, but I know usually by the Fourth of July somewhere in there. Oh, it's kind of been done by now, but.
And then it changes throughout the year, cause we'll shift around, start some one side earlier.
Okay, okay.
We, we did have a slightly delay with the breakdown, um, and we're putting out as much as we can with our supplier. We're, we're using as much as our supplier bring to us right now. So we're putting out as fast as we can, getting there.
And then just one more comment. I want to publicly thank you and commend you. Because during the ice storm that affected the east side of our county, specifically lakes of the north was terrible. And that you had the foresight and, you know, to hire horn, um, horn, uh, logging company to come in. And, and, you know, I, I just. I thank you. I thank you for that because God knows what it would have been if you didn't do that.
Well, just to touch on that, and I was, last time I was here, I reported on that, and we were still kind of in the mix of that, but. Uh, in total, we spent about six hundred thousand dollars on cleanup. About half of that was contracted with Horn Logging to come in and, and really, uh. Expedite that removal, the debris removal from the right away. And they really knocked it out. It, it, they, it was about a solid month they were working and they got it done. Um, the other half of that, that I mentioned, the six hundred thousand was our crew, our equipment. That we used and it was not just east side, it was across the north side. Uh, Banks was hit fairly hard and, and all the way to Elmer and down. That east side of the county. So there was a lot of areas to clean up, uh, and it even drug out a little bit beyond. It was seasonal roads that we didn't worry about right away and, and there may be still a few though to. Push back, but we got the bulk of it done. Uh, my crew really stepped up, worked hard, uh. They knocked out the part two, did a great job and. It was shifting from winter right into ice. Yeah, I'm just glad that it wasn't ice on the road. Bringing trees down. Uh, we, we are still working on that. There's a, the huge. There, yep. Uh, we got a contract with Chuck Waste. It's a no cost contract to the road commission. They're gonna chip it and take it out there, uh, but they've got a huge task ahead of them to give her that balance.
Sure. Yeah, a little bit along that line, um, even before the ice storm, we've had a few constituents that. Talked about some of our not so. Our gravel roads, our seasonal roads seem like they're becoming a little more overgrown. And now in Banks Township after the ice storm. There's a lot of them that have trees there, you know, halfway over the road. And I realize it's not a lot of people that travel those, but people do still travel them, so. I was just wondering if, you know, you're making some sort of a plan to. To trim some trees and some overgrowth over some of those roads or. I haven't seen anything major undertaking in the last ten years. And I know. Traffic wise, your primary roads see ninety-five percent of the traffic, but. At some point, it does have to be addressed or you can't really travel down it without scratching your vehicle anymore.
No major plans set up for that, but, uh, we do, we use large equipment to. Raid seasonal roads, so to get our equipment down there, we gotta keep them cut back. Uh, but it is a whole priority, like I said, so we're taking care of everything else we have to take care of and then we'll get to those once we can. Try and cut it back.
They're discussing, uh, succession planning now because, uh. You're not gonna be easily replaced. Uh, the institutional knowledge we've all lost here, but, you know, uh, over the last few years has been immense. And so, uh. Thank you and to the board for, uh. Burial planning. So appreciate it. Anything else?
I've made a motion that we approve the county road commission's annual refer.
Thank you. Thanks for, appreciate it. Thanks, thanks, Pete. Ms. Christman, how are you?
Good evening. Those of you who don't know me, my name is Christine Christman. I'm the executive director of the Watershed Center. Uh, the Watershed Center has been around a little over thirty years. And, uh, basically our mission is to advocate for clean water in Grand Traverse Bay and to act to preserve and protect its watershed. Um, the link that you guys got in the packet is our overall organizational, uh, report. But today I really do want to talk kind of specifically about the stuff that we're doing here in Antrim County. So Antrim County encompasses the largest portion. Of the Grand Traverse Bay watershed, so. Almost, uh, sixty percent of the water that gets out into the bay comes from, uh, Antrim County and the chain of lakes that we have. So it is a huge contribution to the water quality that we have in the bay. Hence, we really want to start looking at the watershed itself and, and figuring out ways that we can protect it better. Um, some of the ways that we do that specifically here in Antrim County, we, um, host. It's a mouthful. It's the El River Lake, uh, Chain of Lakes Watershed Plan Implementation Team. We affectionately call it Purple Whipit. If anybody, no folks have been to that meeting. Um, we've been doing this, uh, in conjunction with tip of the met watershed council and co-hosting these meetings. And basically. It is a group of, um, lake associations, environmental organizations, local government folks. They get together and, um, basically talk about stuff that's happening that is impacting water quality in the chain of lakes. And trying to collaborate to get solutions to some of those issues. Um, last year, we sort of went through a little bit of a visioning session, like what are we? We've been here for a while. What are we doing? Are we just meeting to chat? Um, is there value in that? And we went through a little bit of visioning process and it sort of helped us come back out and sort of say. We really do want to work together to help to implement that plan. So we meet, um, every other month. And there are over a hundred folks that are invited to those, uh, notes go out for those as well. Anybody is always welcome to join those. Um, they really are great ways to learn what's going on in each one of the lakes that's in the watershed. What else? Um. One of the things that, um. Has come out of that watershed plan implementation team, uh, there's been a focus on, uh, trying to educate our shoreline homeowners. So last year, the watershed center came out with a waterfront property owner resource guide. So it's an online guide. Uh, that basically goes through, we talked to a bunch of homeowners and said, what do you, what do you have right to know before you moved in? Or whatever you had issues with since you've been here that you really wish that you knew where you could go and look for those answers. We kind of took all of that stuff together and we created this guide that looks at some of those issues. So everything from, uh. What it might look like to have a natural shoreline to septic systems. To, you know, where do I go if I want to get a permit to do something on my shoreline, all of that. Um, so then last year we went and we created these postcards. I. Yeah, one of you guys can pass those around. We created these postcards and we're trying to get these postcards now in folks' hands, that they know that that waterfront resource guide exists. Um, and how to access it. It really is a, um, dynamic tool. So every time there are new resources that come out or things that might change. Or something that we see that we really want to make sure folks know about, we can easily update it on our online guide, which is why we did it that way. But then now we're trying to get these in, um, every homeowner's hands. The next phase we're hoping is to literally just mail it to every waterfront property owner in the chain of lakes. Um. Another big piece of what we do, uh, you may have heard about our Grand Traverse Bay Waterkeeper, it's a position that we have, we are part of the International Waterkeeper Alliance. And basically, uh, the work that we do through that is to try to keep our waters swimable, fishable and. Um, the way that that looks a lot is, um, by basically answering questions that folks have about water quality issues. So we consider ourselves a local resource for municipalities, for engaged community members, um, anybody who has a question. Um, and you wouldn't believe some of the questions we get, uh, we do tally them up and we try to figure out, uh, ways that we can help either answer the questions that people have. Uh, connect to them with the resource that might help them, or sometimes connect them with their regulator, so a lot of times, again, people don't know who to call. We have an issue, we have a lot of good relationships with, um, our local and state, uh, and federal, uh, regulators, and so just kind of connecting people when it makes sense. Some of the things that we've done, um, we've worked closely with the, the village of Elk Rapids and some of the, um, shoreline work that they're doing on some cities. And questions when they have things that come about their stormwater, or lots of things that you guys are dealing with. Uh, Milton Township, similarly, they were redoing their shoreline ordinance, so we were working with them to help make some of that language good. Um, we, um, tried to help connect, there's a group of folks who are, um. Uh, trying to, um, ensure that boaters who are enjoying areas like Brass River. Um, or Torch River, that they aren't, um, causing erosion on any of the shorelines and things, and so we help connect that group to regulators. Um, so they could get some answers on things like that, so really just being a, a resource and a local, a local guide to help connect people. That's a huge part of what we do, um, and is really, I think, one of the best and kind of most valuable things that we, we provide as a service. Um. I mentioned a little bit about, you know, rapids, so we do have, um, stormwater action plans for some of the more. Um, I'll call them urban centers, um, things like Better, Alvin, Alden, Central Lake, Elk Rapids, Allsworth. We have stormwater action plans that we did several years ago, which kind of goes through and talks about things that could happen, projects that we could do that could help. Um, say reduce stormwater in, in a village, uh, for example. And so we continue to have conversations with those communities and trying to implement some of those projects, and the most recent one. We did in Elk Rapids, um, we, we spent about a million dollars in installing, uh, rain gardens and various locations and some underground infiltration and things like that as well, so. We're, um, trying to talk with our local communities and look for opportunities where we might be able to provide. Grant funding or things like that, that might help move some of those projects forward. Um, stormwater is the biggest step to water quality, so that is a lot of the focus of the projects and things that we do. Um, I guess the last thing I'll mention, I'd be remiss, one of the things that we, um, have been doing with a lot lately, um. Access, um. Of, uh, Clean Water Act and Michigan Environmental Protection Act litigation, so that's a fancy way of saying. Uh, we are in a lawsuit, um, us, uh, Elk Skagamaw Lakes Association, Association and the, uh, Grand Traverse Band of Auto and Tepal Indians. Um. Burnett Foods is a, uh. Operates a food processing plant in Elk Rapids, I'm sure everybody is familiar with it. Um, they discharge their wastewater to the ground through, uh, spray irrigation fields that they have, and that's all under a groundwater permit that they have through. Um, the, through Eagle, the Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy. And for over a decade, um, they have been violating that permit and adversely impacting the water quality of the groundwater. Nearby wetlands, uh, Spencer Creek that flows out into Elk Lake, so in twenty twenty-three. Um, us, Oksia Gama Lakes Association and the Grand Traverse Band filed suit to enforce the Clean Water Act. Um, and the Michigan Environmental Protection Act, and then, um, last year since twenty twenty-four, we've been. Going through the, basically the discovery process, which is learning everything you want to know and us sharing info with them and going back and. Um, and that just concluded, uh, in May of this year, so the next steps for that. Is a court mandated, uh, settlement discussion, and it's really in the judge's hands to see what might happen next, so. I'm happy to have conversations with anybody about that on a more in-depth level. Uh, it's something that we have been very engaged in, um, and very intentional about how we are going about, um. The steps that we took before we entered into this process and being able to, um. Really do what we feel is right for the environment while also trying to also support, um, a local. Um, a local business that we have, so. So that's all that I have, you guys will get a copy of this report as well, but I'm happy to answer questions.
Questions.
You do a great job.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Is there any conversations with, with Leslie, my, with Leslie and everything that's happening with? In her office?
Yeah, great question, she, um, she spoke to that Urkel Whipit group at our last meeting. And let everybody know what she was trying to do with the special assessment district, um. And I think we are going to take the next meeting and we're going to meet at a couple of the sites, um, so really. That was to better understand some of the efforts that she's going to do, I know from a watershed center perspective. I'm going to have a meeting with her as well, because, um, you know, we also work a lot in Grand Traverse County and. Seeing how we might be able to help her facilitate any of those discussions, or if we can help talk to commissioners that we know, that kind of thing, so. Um, I'm in the early stages of learning what she's doing, and I think she is also developing stuff as she goes, so. We're in close communication, uh, both with the Urkel Whipit and the Watershed Center itself, so, yeah, that will definitely be. Something we're engaged in as you guys keep that process going, yeah.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? I, I get a motion to accept Christine's report.
I'll make the motion to accept. The Watershed Center Grand Traverse Bay two thousand twenty-four annual report.
I'll support, thank you very much, moving to the other, please say aye. Thank you, thank you for taking, thank you for taking your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you commissioners. My name is Candy Manon, I'm the executive director of the area agency. Michigan, um, based in Traverse City, covering ten counties and Antrim County is one of them. We've, um, met to view of whom you are familiar with our organization, as you've had presentations from us in the past, but. My, um, this is my first, um, so I wanted to take the opportunity to walk you through, uh. And you should all have it now, yeah. So just starting on page one. To give you a high level of, so we are a private nonprofit organization, that year was our fiftieth anniversary, so we've been. Time. Just note that this thirty percent of our funding, the seventy percent of our funding is. And so that was seventy percent of our, our revenue. Um, we are governed by a board of directors. I want to move, uh. To, uh. Contracted services. And if I go too fast, you can slow me down, but I think I'm the last one here, um. Um, anyway, so most of the money that we get in through our organization, we funnel it out through our community, it was like the commission on aging. We do very few services directly. Um, so this page that you're seeing here is a list of, um, contracts that we grant out through, uh. Um, and through that, then you can see the different services that are funded. Our largest service by far and largest. That we fund is nutrition, so you're thinking congregant meals, home delivered meals, that's our largest over. Um, on page three. Um, this, this page talks a little bit more about the direct services that we do often. Complement and complement each other, so we do services like care management, so we listen social workers that go into the homes. And determine eligible. Caregivers for our programs and services, um, once they develop a centered care. Start calling and making arrangements to coordinate services. Cut those up, they actually go in and provide those services, so we work in partnership with them. Um, and then we also have several other, so you can see one is the Medicaid Nitro School. Um, for that. Disability. For long-term services and supports, so it's a separate bucket with different types of disability criteria. Sorry, sixty-five and older. Um, over eighteen and older with a disability. Um, so, um, last year we served about seven hundred and fifty individuals throughout the region with those programs. If you look on page four, um, I really like the visual because it has the first in the middle, and that's, um, always where we begin, making sure that the person's needs are being met. Our mission is to really advocate and, um. By programs and services to keep people independent at home for as long as possible. Um, I just thought. When I out, would I go to a nursing home? Since being in this field for so many years, I realized there's so many other programs and services out there now that we all have choice. And there's programs that. On age and place, we can do that by programs like ours and by the help of our community partners like the commission on aging, we can get those same services or similar. In our homes, if that's where we choose to be, um, and so that's something that we really. Think about and ground ourselves in as we're doing our work. But when you surround this person, you see all the different, um, hours and number of participants that we've, um, that we've. Added services to and just know that those people from Antrim County represented in those numbers. Page five. There's a few other direct services that we do, um, to a smaller scale, but still nonetheless extremely important, um, one of them. Is information and assistance, that was actually not a smaller scale. Being the social workers at my. Sure, they took over eight hundred calls. To our community partners, for questions, um, on all sorts of different topics, um, a lot of the calls are people. Calling in crisis already, um, that need help, they're being discharged from nursing home and. Place to be, they, they got a fall, um, their caregivers call to get support because they're. You can imagine all the, the different calls, but, um, that's the primary rule of our information and assistance program is to be that hub for the region. Um, we also have an ombudsman, if anybody's sort of a long-term care ombudsman, they go into the nursing facilities and basic facilities to. Evidence in those facilities, um, and. Um, our, we have two of them actually now. Well, we don't have any issues that the resident I have. Okay, some of the other programs that we have as well, and I'm happy to take questions on them at the end, um. You can see some of the statistics, the one I want to end. Assistance program. Right, there's been a change in how the, the program's being run at the federal and state level, so now it's. Medicare assistance program and, um, the commission on aging, um. Um, for the community, we have counselors from our office, we're the regional coordinator for the Medicare assistance. Um, if they need more, um, prescription coverage, like. Training to say. This is going to an agent that might say, I'm getting permission, I think you really need this. Um, and I used to work in healthcare for fourteen years, so, um. I kind of know how. So that is highly valued, um, and just, um, you can see. Over two million in savings for those that were served, which is significant when you look at the cost of people. The last thing that I want to say is in twenty. Um, I talked about numbers that through our agency, um, specifically to Antrim County, there was over two hundred forty-seven thousand. Um, that we paid to the, to the, to the aging, um, and we say that because each year we also send a letter to. We haven't changed in twenty years. Dollars down from the American Black and older Michigan Black is where we pay to match those dollars. And so, um, each of the ten counties that we serve, we send out a match request, and those dollars that. Helped down those dollars that come into the county, so the two hundred and forty-seven thousand, so.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, questions? Thank you very much, thanks, thanks for, uh, thank you for everything. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, move to second, if I was a favorite, please say aye. I, I just pay my post, thank you very much. Uh, submissions, uh, looking for a motion to approve Antrim County Transportation's annual test.
I'll second it.
Thank you, questions?
Uh, just a quick, oh, um, Christina is gonna be, um. Is doing a wonderful job out there, she's got her hands full and. I believe that we're going to move that department. Light years ahead. Looking forward to the, the change.
Right, um. So do we get a motion in a second? Uh, Antrim County Oliver motion to accept the Antrim County Parks Department annual report.
Make the motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Looking seconded, um, Jeremy, uh, the only comment I wanted to make, and I think Tom has left is, and I'm sure. There was a, a mention about putting a sign up at the Elk Rapids State Park, uh, that the pavilion was available for rentals. Um, just, they, I, I, if we could just make sure, I'm sure Leslie just had the conversation with the village. But that's our intention to put that sign up there, so it does not strike this village as unusual, okay, thank you. Uh, moving second, all those favor, please say aye. Uh, we're motion to accept the thirteenth thirty-four annual report.
Make the motion.
Uh, second, moved, secondly, discussion, all those favorite, please say aye.
Yes.
Yes. You were posed. Uh, looking for, uh, motion to accept the Antrim County Brewing Department annual. Spreading questions. No, all those favor, please say aye. And finally, uh, looking to accept the Antrim County Information Technology Department annual report.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, second, move the second, questions? All those favorite, please say aye. Okay, very much, that's several reports, uh. But you did that on purpose to me. For Officer Delegate, I'm looking for a motion to appoint Stephanie Murray as the Officer Delegate and Jeremy Scott as the Officer Alternate Representing Administration during the twenty twenty-five Municipal Employees Retirement Systems Annual Conference. Business meeting held October sixteen and seventeen, twenty twenty-five in act.
Uh, make the motion.
Thank you, questions? All those favorite, please say aye.
Yes.
Yes, anyone's first. Open your litigation settlement agreement, uh, looking for a motion to approve the attached resolution and author as the county administrator, sign a participation agreement for the Sanders. Settlement agreement.
I'll make that motion.
Jeremy, any comments? Nope, any questions? All those favor, please say aye. Thank you very much, Ricky. Well, call for me, thanks.
Okay. What is your highlight?
Yes.
Commissioner Skoll.
Yes.
Commissioner Rouge.
Yes.
Commissioner Van Elster.
Yes.
Commissioner Hattler.
Yes, thank you. Uh. Moving on, uh, looking, unless there's someone who wishes to go in the closed session, I'm looking for a motion to ratify the bargaining agreement. Antrim County and the Fraternal Order of Police representing the Antrim County Sheriff's deputies and dispatch employees for three years, twenty twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-seven. The chairman be authorized to exceed the agreement and the finance director be authorized to make the appropriate budget amendments. Funding to come from general fund contingencies.
I'll make that motion for.
Supported. Questions? Of course, Jeremy, um, any, any specific one I, I.
Uh, I do wanna follow up on. Fisher. School's question about that, that was, uh. Number sixteen was fingerprints and sex offenders. There was actually only one sex offender item on there. It was dozens of fingerprints.
Okay, I thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, number two. Seems like this just keeps going on and on, so now we need. Permits of some sort.
We only needed permits, though.
Thought we had, but.
Well, yeah, that's what we were. What they believe by the subcontractor thinks.
Um, are these township permits or?
No, these are building permits. Um, it's right here. The, uh. Some contractor makes some assumptions and some, but whatever. Two, it needs to be, um, and, uh. Plans were never even submitted by. Um, so we got plans, working with construction go directly now to, uh. Deal with this and and forth, but it it did. Kind of rewind where we thought we were by quite a bit.
Good question.
Any other question? Jeremy's report. Uh, Chair, Chairman's report, just, uh, I, I want, thanks, Jason, thanks Ray for your comments about, uh. Um. Your questions and comments to Mr. Babbitt. Um, also last night it was on, if anyone's interested, it was on seven and four last night, uh. Uh, there was a great uh, piece, um, and, um. Uh, GTI, um, they did speak with their director and they also spoke with one of the uh, employees, one of the clients there. Um, so I would encourage everyone to take a look at that as well, um. Uh, any other comments, Jason? Nothing, Jess? That's great. No public comments tonight. Thank you very much, everyone.